Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council Meeting. And we're up here having a discussion on our iPads not working and what date it is. So, Councilman Young, it's not March 10th, today is March 24th. And I have the prayer and we have a ceremonial for our pleasures that we'll get to here in a minute. But if you will bow your heads.
Hey, Shane.
Yes.
Roger Haley, let me give you an update on him. He had a triple bypass today. The results came back very good, so just continue to keep him in our prayers.
Absolutely. Father, we thank you for this night, this chance that we get to come together, that we have the privilege and the ability that we can come into these council chambers and that we can come represent our residents without reprisal, that we don't have to do this without fear, that we live in a free country, that we can come and do this. We lift up Mr. Haley tonight, that he has a speedy recovery and he heals quickly. All the people who were in Brussels, we lift up to them who are hurting. And, Father, we don't know sometimes why these bad things happen, but there's a plan and that we pray and know that justice will always prevail. I thank you for the opportunity that we have to serve these residents and that you've put us in this position. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Let me come down. I just about messed up. We're going to have to say the pledge twice. I have a special guest that we want to introduce tonight and someone that I know that is special to certain grandparents who are here. We have Mr. Benjamin Brett Barrett. Mr. Ives, if you want to come down. Benjamin, then Deb, if you all want to come over and then parents would come up. Folks, this is Mr. and Ms. Ives' grandson. And Benjamin received his Eagle Scout Award. So, Benjamin, you're officially an Eagle Scout? Is that correct?
Sir.
So, we have a proclamation that we want to read before we do the pledge and then Benjamin's going to lead us in the pledge. Whereas Benjamin Brett Barrett was born on June 30th, 1999, in Murfreesboro, Tennessee, his parents are Brett and Kelly Barrett and his grandparents are David and Deborah Ives and Barry Barrett and Jean Palet. And whereas Benjamin's adventure in scouting began as a Tiger Club in PAC 538 sponsored by St. Roosevelt Lima Catholic Church, where Benjamin attended grade school and junior high school. And whereas Benjamin crossed over to Boy Scout Troop 398 sponsored by St. Mark's United Methodist Church in March 20th, 2010. As a Boy Scout, Benjamin has earned 29 merit badges, has participated in more than 128 days of camping, including 10 days of below freezing weather camping, has joined in the polar bear plunge four times, has invested more than 86 hours in community service projects and has participated in scout high adventure trips of selling in the Florida Keys and hiking Philmont Scout Ranch. And whereas Benjamin has received special scouting awards, including the Arrow of Light, God and Church Award, BSA Snorkeling, NRA Light Rifle Pro Marksman, 50-millimeter backpacking, National Order of the Arrow Camping and National Order of the Arrow Hiking. And whereas Benjamin has been elected by his peers to the Order of the Arrow and has served his troop as patrol leader, quartermaster, bugler, Order of the Arrow representative, troop guide, assistant senior patrol leader, instructor and senior patrol leader. And whereas for his Eagle Service project, Benjamin raised some $600 in cash, secured donations of some 400 in materials and supplies, and supervised a group of volunteers who worked 103 hours to construct an amphitheater at the historic Sam Davis Home in Smyrna. And whereas Benjamin will receive his Eagle Scout Award at a special Eagle Court Honor on Saturday, March 26th, at St. Mark's United Methodist Church. Now therefore, I Shane McFarland, Mayor of the City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, on behalf of the entire city council and in recognition of his great accomplishments in achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, do hereby declare March 26th, 2016, is the day to honor Benjamin Brett Barrett and urge all the community to join as we extend our congratulations and wish him well in his future endeavors. Here's a proclamation for you. Thank you all. I know you all are proud. You will lead us in the pledge.
Please hold in pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to do the republic which is theirs, one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as are all.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, David.
It was nice.
And under ceremonial items, I have to say this. I really wanted to mention it in my prayer but thought that that would not be appropriate. But thank the Lord that MTSU beat Michigan State.
We were talking about the Kentucky win.
That's right. So, for those of you all that have been living in a cave for the last week, there was a great celebration last night. MTSU men beat Michigan State, a 15 seed beat a 2 seed. And then also, I think there were nine schools in the country that had the men and women win conference championships and make it to the NCAA tournament, and MTSU was one of those. On top of that, they did that with 100% graduation rate, which is even more impressive. And then to top that off, the MTSU men baseball team beat number five Vanderbilt day before yesterday. So, it has been just a historic week in Middle Tennessee. And to even top that off, we did that by beating Mr. Lyons' alma mater in the conference championship. We beat Old Dominion.
Both men and women's.
And I'm waiting for my pay up on our wager that we had as well. All right. Ms. Ruddy, we'll turn the podium over to you.
Mayor and council, I was honored this year to work with Jane Corbin and lead the city employees in the annual giving campaign. And this week, the United Way awarded us a Circle of Excellence Award, silver level, for our increased participation. We had a 19% increase in the number of employees participating in the annual giving and then a 15% increase in the amount of contribution. So, we're very proud and I'm proud to bring this back.
Thank you, Ms. Ruddy. And I think you said, who did we beat? And want to make sure that the...
To keep the theme going, I did notice the bronze level was awarded to Town of Smyrna.
All right. If Mayor Reed is listening, I'm sure on a Thursday night she's watching the Murfreesboro City Council, but just in case you are, see you next year. All right. You have the consent agenda in front of you.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, if you call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young. Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland. Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Aye.
We'll now move into third readings and consider for passage on third and final reading, ordinance
Mayor McFarland.
160Z04 Dominion Area in the Cedar Retreat PRD located along Florence Road. Aye. Did skip over one more ceremonial item, and Mr. Lyons, I think you have someone that you want to introduce as a new employee to the City of Murfreesboro.
Move for passage on third reading.
I would. Mayor, we are pleased to have Jim Kerr rejoin the City of Murfreesboro.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
He will be serving as our transportation director.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Mr. Dana Richardson held that role very capably.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Interestingly enough, Mr. Kerr and Mr. Richardson were in college together, began their careers
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
with the City of Murfreesboro together in the traffic section of our city.
Consider for passage on third and final reading, ordinance 160Z07, to rezonate an area on
Jim worked for us for many years and then went to the private sector where our staff
3281 Segal Road, Academy at Segal, to plan commercial development, PCD District.
worked continuously with Mr. Kerr in that position. So, we are excited to have Mr. Kerr rejoin the city.
Move for passage on third reading.
Mr. Richardson left things in great shape and we look forward to Mr. Kerr's continued
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
success with the city, our transportation department, its employees, Rover, and the
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
people that we serve.
Aye.
All right.
Mr. Washington.
Mr. Kerr, glad to have you here.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Glad to be here.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right. Moving to first readings. We'll move into the reading of the minutes, or excuse me, approval of the minutes of Consider for passage on first reading, ordinance 160Z05, to rezonate an area located along Manson Pike, Mattington Park, to plan residential development, PRD District. the March 3rd, 2016 regular meeting and the March 10th, 2016 regular meeting. And you have a revised program book attached.
Hearing no objections, move for approval.
Mr. Blumley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Your call back on March 3rd, we conducted a public hearing on a rezoning request from
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
RS 15 to PRD located along the south side of Manson Pike.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
It was for an 88-unit townhome development.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
There was discussion at the public hearing and some concerns expressed by the neighbors. And the city council also directed staff and the developer to hold a neighborhood meeting so that the applicant could discuss those concerns with the neighbors. I'm pleased to report that since that time, staff did hold a neighborhood, staff and the developer did hold a neighborhood meeting on March 16th, which was last Wednesday. It was held at the Blackman Community Center on Manson Pike, basically right across the street from the subject property. We had a good attendance at that meeting, about 13 of the neighbors from the adjoining subdivisions that are Oakton, Princeton Oaks and Blackman Meadows were in attendance and Mr. Smotherman was in attendance at that meeting as well. The developer had been in contact with the spokesperson for the neighborhoods and the spokesperson for the neighborhoods sent a bullet pointed list of those concerns to the developer and the developer then went to work in addressing those concerns. At the neighborhood meeting, he went over, the developer's representative went over how they were going to respond to those concerns. And in the agenda materials tonight, you have a letter from Mr. Rob Mulchan and David Alcorn. Mr. Mulchan is with SCC and Mr. Alcorn, the developer, addressing those concerns point by point. And I'm pleased to report that at the neighborhood meeting, there seemed to be a general consensus that most everybody was pleased with the developer's response to the concerns of the neighborhood. With that being said, I'd like to invite Mr. Rob Mulchan with SCC to give you a brief rundown of those bullet pointed items and so that he can discuss how he and Mr. Alcorn have addressed those concerns that were brought up at the public hearing. And I'd be happy to answer any questions either now or after Mr. Mulchan's presentation.
Bring him up.
Mr. Washington.
Gave you mayor, councilman. Wanted to give you a little report on our neighborhood meeting. Virginia Griffith, who is the representative for the three subdivisions adjacent to Mattington Park, brought to us the day after our last meeting, a list of requests for things they'd like to see modified or changed in regards to Mattington Park. Mr. Alcorn and myself have worked together on this to get this finalized in regards to most of these. Most of these we kind of agreed to in principle at the last meeting we were here for, but I wanted to kind of go through it real quick and kind of reiterate the bullet points that she sent to us and kind of give you our responses. The first one is you guys have it in your packet as well as this letter that we addressed on the 17th, Matthew Blumley. The first one was about setbacks and increasing that from 20 to 30 feet along the boundary along Oakton and Blackman Meadows subdivisions. We agreed to that and we were going to move forward with, the pattern that you guys have has that shown as any of the setbacks along Blackman Meadows and Oakton and Princeton Oaks have been revised and added an extra 10 feet. So, there's actually 30 feet of building setback between the property lines and those subdivisions. There was also discussion, request was to look at increasing the buffer, the landscape buffer. We agreed to do that and increase it from a type C to a type D. So, that increases it from a 12-foot landscape buffer to a 15-foot landscape buffer and increases one portion of that vegetative buffer from a medium shrub to a taller shrub in regards to that planting there. You'll still have the double staggered row evergreen trees and then that push will be in front of that to add to that. The other one we talked about was in regards to the property lines of the existing trees. We agreed in principle at the meeting as well and we're going to continue to work forward to leaving the existing tree row between our developments intact. And with the buffer, we feel that's going to be a good separational element between our developments on that. We also looked at the side and rear elevations. They did not want to see a vinyl type product looking towards our neighborhood. So, we went back, revised our elevations. Any of the elevations that will be facing those subdivisions will be upgraded to a cement board or hardy board type of material besides the brick and stone composite materials that we'll have on the elevations on that. The next one was regards to circulation in regards to buses or large vehicles going through the neighborhood, which I called more or less, the design actually has a more or less a loop system to it inside, so there will always be a continual looping route for vehicles, moving trucks, buses, you name it, kind of going through there. So, there is, you know, 360-degree circulation, but there's no need for a cul-de-sac situation on that. So, we did talk about that as well. One of the other points was relationship to, is moving the storm pond that's along Manson Pike to the southeast corner of the property. And as I described during the last public meeting, that's just an impossibility from a grading and hydrologic standpoint that that pond has to be where it is in regards to that. There was two requests that were made after the public hearing. One was to look at putting in the buffer all along the property line. We spoke to Ms. Griffith and the rest of the neighbors and told them that that was one of those things, it's a phasing type of situation. Right now, the section that's along their subdivision is in phase four, so it's a three or four years out kind of picture. So, we talked about that and we all kind of agreed that, you know, from a standpoint of logistics, it's one of those things that it's not a possibility at this point in time to do that just because there's a lot of liability that goes in with that. And part of that buffer is also required that it has to be irrigated. So, there's a smaller infrastructure portion to go with that as well. And the last point that was part of the letter we got the next day was in question, was request was to remove some townhomes along the boundary line with their property. Mr. Alcorn and myself worked with Ms. Griffith and the rest of them and spoke to regards that, you know, it's just not a feasibility standpoint to go ahead and remove a whole section of townhomes from this development in regards to what we've already given them in regards to keeping the trees, increasing the buffer, changing the materials on our buildings that are facing their side of things. So, we were all kind of in agreement in regards to all these points. So, we left the meeting in a good standing with Ms. Griffith and the rest of the representatives that showed up that night. And I think we have a good product moving forward based on these requests that they made. I think it's going to be an overall good product for Mattington Park, but also for our neighbors in Oakton and Princeton Oaks and Blackman Meadows. If you have any questions, I'll leave.
I just want to compliment the planning department for organizing and the planning and the coordination of the meeting. And as well as the planning department, the developer on the fantastic job you did of finding the compromises that I think appeased the neighborhood. And truly, I think you went far and beyond what my expectations would have been. And so, my compliments go out to you. I think you can tell by the people in opposition that were here at the last meeting, they're no longer here. So, I think that shows how successful that meeting was. So, congratulations on the project and good luck with your development.
And if there's no questions, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll consider recommendations of the city manager.
Mayor McFarland, members of city council, got two items for you this evening. The first item is a lease with Franklin Synergy. The city is set to close on that property by March 31st. Mr. Tindall's been working with their attorneys to get the closing pulled together and that'll happen before the end of the month. But as you recall, during that acquisition, we worked with Franklin Synergy, who wants to maintain a downtown presence while they're constructing their new facility in the gateway. The lease that's before you would, in essence, allow them to continue with that site where they've been since 2003 to operate a bank. The terms of the lease will be that they'll be responsible for all the utilities, all of the maintenance. The rent that they'll pay the city is a little more than $9,000 per month. And it is our recommendation that you approve the attached lease.
What's the length of the lease?
The term would expire June 30th of 2017. It's a little more than a year.
Is there a contingency to continue it if there's not need for it?
If there isn't, I don't believe there's not a contingency or the ability to move it forward. But if nothing's going on in the project, I think Franklin Synergy, unless they've made other arrangements, wouldn't...
Do something again.
Provided, yeah, provided there's nothing happening with the property that's likely.
Thank you, sir.
No other questions, I move we approve the recommendations of the city manager.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll consider recommendations of the city manager.
Mayor McFarland, members of city council, got two items for you this evening. The first item is a lease with Franklin Synergy. The city is set to close on that property by March 31st. Mr. Tindall's been working with their attorneys to get the closing pulled together and that'll happen before the end of the month. But as you recall, during that acquisition, we worked with Franklin Synergy, who wants to maintain a downtown presence while they're constructing their new facility in the gateway. The lease that's before you would, in essence, allow them to continue with that site where they've been since 2003 to operate a bank. The terms of the lease will be that they'll be responsible for all the utilities, all of the maintenance. The rent that they'll pay the city is a little more than $9,000 per month. And it is our recommendation that you approve the attached lease.
What's the length of the lease?
The term would expire June 30th of 2017. It's a little more than a year.
Is there a contingency to continue it if there's not need for it?
If there isn't, I don't believe there's not a contingency or the ability to move it forward. But if nothing's going on in the project, I think Franklin Synergy, unless they've made other arrangements, would...
Do something again.
Provided, yeah, provided there's nothing happening with the property that's likely.
Thank you, sir.
No more questions, I move we approve the recommendations of the city manager. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Mayor, just also like to remind you, we will have a workshop on the Franklin Synergy property on April 7th at 5:00 PM. That's be an opportunity for us really to talk about, you know, goals and objectives for that property since we'll be taking ownership of it on March 31st. So, remind you of that on your calendar. We'll do that 5:00 in the council chambers. The second item I have for you is a recommendation for a contract with Bell Construction to serve as construction manager at risk for the police headquarters renovation. Since the city acquired the property in 1004, North Island Avenue, we've done a space needs study, we've demolished the interior of the building, and Cannon Associates has been working hard on the plans for that project. We've traditionally used a design bid build format for city construction projects, but we're recommending to you this time to use a construction manager at risk, which we believe will deliver a much better value to the city. We did go through a competitive selection process. We received three proposals. We had a cross-functional team interview the firms and Bell Construction was selected as the firm for us to negotiate a contract. Bell has been around since 1970. They've built some of the landmark buildings in Nashville, including the Batman Building, the Music City Center, the Sounds New Stadium. And closer to home, Bell serves as a contractor for the Broad Memorial Project. They've got a transportation division and also the Rutherford County Judicial Center, where they'll also be serving as construction manager at risk. So, in this situation, your contractor and your architect are on the same side of the table. They go through the plans and since Bell is very familiar with construction techniques, they'll be able to provide some value engineering, some constructability analysis, looking at the availability of materials, and really making sure that the city gets great value for this project. The contract that's included that Mr. Tindall worked on is a traditional AIA contract for a construction manager at risk. And right now, what we're looking for is them to serve in a pre-construction phase for a fee of not to exceed $75,000. I fully expect the value that'll add will bring that money back to the city. And then once the plans are at the 90% level, the city and Bell will negotiate a guaranteed maximum price, so we'll know what the project's going to cost. So, it is my recommendation to you to hire Bell as our construction manager at risk for the police headquarters project.
Rob, do you have any idea if we enter this contract when the police building would be completed?
I believe we've looked at a construction schedule of about 14 months. We've got a meeting, I think that was originally set for next week with Bell and Mr. Cannon. Looks like we're going to have to move that a day or two, but we'll get deeper into schedules at that point. But I suspect, I'd like to be under construction late spring, certainly by early summer and look at about a 14-month construction schedule. But just getting Bell on board now, we'll have a better idea when we talk to them.
I think the construction manager at risk gives some benefits because we have a qualified person who's managing these projects. And not to say that we're not qualified, but, you know, as staff members, we have other projects that are going on and trying to have staff members manage construction can be tough. So, I think this is a, we end up saving the taxpayers in the long run because we get projects done quicker, hopefully with good quality, and it saves us all the way around.
So, for instance, Mayor, the, you know, Bell will pre-qualify their subcontractors. They're going to look to make sure that their work is performed satisfactorily, that they do it on time, within the budget that was established, so we know we will have a stable of very qualified subcontractors. When we checked references, Bell's references were outstanding. I believe Nashville only uses construction manager at risk now for their construction projects because you do get the better value at the end of the day.
Well, at the end of the day, in my past experience with North Carolina Electric, Bell is excellent. You know, I never had any problem with them. They were excellent. Biscan, RG Anderson, all these contractors around here that do a majority of the work, they're excellent. And Bell is excellent. Johnson and Bailey doing the project management part about, and I sit in some of those meetings and those trailers and things with them, that they, I think, Rob, I think Bell's going to be fine. They have a track record and they do good work, good quality work, and that's my experience with them.
Ready. No other questions, I move we approve the recommendations of the city manager.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
We'll now consider recommendations of the assistant city manager.
I'm inviting Mr. Smith to come join me in case you all have a technical question. The negotiations performed by the city some 20 years ago in obtaining landfill space at Middle Point with no tipping fee is a truly remarkable feat. Middle Point has come into the end of its useful service life. Depending upon whom you ask, somewhere between five and 12 years. I think common feeling is there's around eight years left. In our, with our partners, Rutherford County, we're ready to begin the search for some professional consulting to assist the city and the county in preparing a strategic plan for what do we do with our solid waste after Middle Point is no longer a free disposal site to the city. We've got two documents in front of you for approval tonight. One, we're asking your permission to go out on a competitive sealed proposal to find that consultant to work with us on the strategic plan. The second is a memorandum of understanding with Rutherford County that we would share costs 50/50 on this plan. The plan estimates somewhere between $300,000 and $400,000 in expense. We have left the door open in the MOU should any of the other three incorporated cities choose to join in. We would all share pro-rata on population the expenses of the plan. But if none of the other communities agree to join in at this point in time, it would be 50/50, Rutherford County and Murfreesboro.
Jim, who will come up with the, kind of the rules for the bid? You know, as far as what will qualify someone for?
We are using the city's competitive proposal documents. We've run those past Jeff Davidson and Mac Nolan at the county to make sure they're comfortable with the way we've structured the documents. Everything in the documents is dual-named, Rutherford County and Murfreesboro. In terms of looking for the consultant, three key areas that we want to consider. One, their experience in doing previous strategic solid waste studies for communities. Two, the personnel that they would assign to our study. And three, the cost of the proposal.
Will we be doing something similar to how we did the evaluation? I mean, whether it be kind of a committee or something like that, that we'll take a look at the different, the folks that come in on the bid?
Right now, that committee is Joey, myself, from the city side, Jeff Davidson, and Mac Nolan from the county side. We may choose to add a couple of other folks, but at least that core group of the four would be bringing you all the recommendation at the right time.
Great.
And really, where this generated, Joey and Mike have done a phenomenal job, not only on working on awareness and really looking at what different emerging technologies are coming out, but, you know, when we talked about this, Joey, two years ago, 18 months ago, I think we said we were, the lifespan was estimated at 12 to 10 years, and then somehow, over the course of the next 18 months, it's gone down three to four years past that. So, we really need to push on and figure out a way to do this, and we're getting above what our comfort level of making decisions of this magnitude. And so, that was where this whole thing has started. The other municipalities, we didn't know what the amount was gonna be at the time. And so, what we did talk about to the other mayors about trying to get the other cities on board, and then it would be split on a population pro-rata share. For example, Eagleville has close to 1,000 residents, so they would be responsible for a percentage of their residents in the population. So, hopefully, the other municipalities will come on board to help.
And we're taking the first step. County will be behind us the first week in April.
And Mayor, I think, you know, to your point, sometimes it's difficult to make a decision when you don't know the dollar amount. This process will get us to a point where we're gonna have a recommended firm with a dollar amount, and then we'll be able to approach the other communities to say, "We really would like to see your participation in here." The timing's good, because everyone's going to do budget right now, so we certainly want to see the other partners here in Rutherford County to help us with this.
And they, you know, I think every mayor that I've talked with, they've all been very supportive. They understand what the issues are and how big this is. So, I don't suspect that it'll be an issue on everyone coming together.
And as we all also understand, you know, Middle Point serves Metro Nashville, other communities in Middle Tennessee. And while our study is gonna focus on our community, the issue about solid waste disposal is a Middle Tennessee issue. And so, I know we've done some outreach to Metro to understand what they're going to do. I would expect with, you know, this market, Middle Point is probably making some business decisions about it, what it's going to do. So, there are a number of important things and conversations that will occur over the coming year or two that'll be important to all of us in Middle Tennessee.
The only thing we can probably say with surety is that we're going from a free disposal situation to a tipping fee of some significance. A million dollars plus a year when Middle Point closes. Not including whatever transportation costs we'd incur to get it there.
Just to follow up on the mayor's comments, and I agree with him 100%, I do think that in the recycle Rutherford's things, and we've looked at, the other cities have been present and accounted for, and I think willing probably to participate. Met with Joey this afternoon for an impromptu meeting, and he helped me a lot. I compliment him for going out and visiting some of the green cities that are already out there and looking at the processes that are already taking place. He's extremely knowledgeable on several different ways of disposing of the material. No matter what we do, there's still going to be ash and material left over that has to be disposed of, glasses, metals, and those type of things. And so, hopefully, there will be some reduction. I think he said in the ash, when you did the burning process, you wind up with about 10% material of what you would start out with. So, we can significantly improve our amount of material that we're putting into the landfill by pursuing this. Again, it's not going to be cheap, and, you know, we may have to, at some point, even become, when we start looking at the expenses, get more creative and start looking at something that I might encourage us to look at would be potentially giving a tax break on property taxes to those who sign up for a private recycling service, and compensate them 50% of whatever that private recycling service might be. So, I think there's some ways that we might think out of the box to encourage people to go out and participate in this, because truly, we would get a savings if they would do that. So, maybe we could get less government and more private sector involvement, and that may be an approach that would come along with this, once we figure out what the cost might be and the potential pluses and minuses of staying as heavily into the business as we currently are.
Eight years sounds like a long time, but by the time we choose a consultant, prepare a strategic plan, multiple governments make decisions, then we have to engineer it, permit it, and put it on the ground. We're pushing the envelope on time already.
Well, and eight years does not count. The numbers that we've heard on the closing of Middle Point have not indicated or taken into consideration growth. So, they're based on current numbers, and looking at our population growth and the county's population growth, not to mention the people who are bringing trash in from the other 19 different counties or 17 different counties. That's...
Middle Tennessee's growth as well is going to...
Yeah, it's gonna impact that. So, thank y'all for working so hard on it.
Mr. Cremley, let me ask one question. It's just about the MOU. Is the shared cost based on population with the county? Or is that, have you, is it defined in the MOU?
If the county is our only partner, we'll go 50/50 with the county.
That's okay.
Should any of the other cities join in, we'll drop back to the pro-rata population.
And I think the way it works out with the numbers that we have run, that there's about 83,000 residents that are in the unincorporated areas of Rutherford County. So, when you take the municipalities out, there's 83,000 residents that would be considered counting not in a jurisdiction or an incorporated jurisdiction. Washington.
Well, what I want residents to understand is that, how will you do with this growth and all the things we're anticipating with the 2035 Conference of Plan, all that kind of good stuff? You know, you better be aware that, you know, you may have a fee on your bill, just like a fuel cost fee. You have a fuel cost fee from TBA on your bill. Mine's about $20, $30, $40 a month. Those are the kind of used fees that I think the resident better be aware that this is what's gonna happen, you know, and, you know, you can't... And I think you better be aware and pay attention to this growth and what we're doing with transportation and all this kind of good stuff with roads and the federal government, and all these, the funds that we need to have for these federal, for roads and expansion of roads. Somebody has to pay. And somewhere down the road, it's gonna fuel down to us. And for low-income folks that really kind of having a hard time making it today, then when you start adding a fuel cost, you start adding a cost for trash, you know, hauling trash and whatevers, and, you know, we need to be engaged. You, as a community, need to be engaged and be prepared to understand that these things come at a cost.
There's no more questions. I'll move that we approve the competitive sealed proposal or process.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright, for call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now move to consider for adoption Resolution 16R07. I'm sorry.
Item B.
We gotta get...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Move for approval, item B.
Second.
Motion second.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Well, now, new move to consider for adoption Resolution 16R07 regarding amendment and restatement of the governmental money purchase 401 plan for the city of Murfreesboro employees hired on or after July 1st, 2010.
Mayor and council, the resolution that's before you is an amendment to the 401 plan, as the title suggests. Section 1 amends the actual plan to conform the language of the plan to the law and to our practices. And Section 3 through 7 amends the adoption agreement, again, to make the plan read consistent with the law and to update the plan to keep us in compliance. With that, we move for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Have one beer permit in front of you?
There is one. This is for a distributor at 809 Park Avenue. This is one of our new permits that we are offering now that we've rewritten our beer permit section. This is a new location, and the application has met our requirements. Other than, they are waiting on one thing with the building codes department before they get signed off for approval there. So, we recommend approval once that's done, and would issue the permit if you so do.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We've got several things that we're working on for board and commission approval, and wanted to ask if it's possible, have tried to make sure that we give everyone a look-see period of one week, but we're gonna have to, if it's okay to deviate from that on a couple tonight. The Design Guidelines Steering Committee, this is one that we've discussed through the Planning Commission and through the planning staff, and you have some members that are recommended. Rick LaLance would be the council representative. Kathy Jones would be the Planning Commission representative. And then, there's Matt Taylor with the Engineering Community, John Blakenship, Commercial Real Estate, Beth Duffield, Economic Development, Amy Fair as a local attorney, Jim Lowen is the Design Professional, and Blake Smith is the contractor representative. But this is going into talking about design guidelines for the city. So, would ask for that approval. Then, we have our planning director, Mr. Whitaker called last night in a panic that John Rogers has announced he is moving out of the city. So, we need to fill the position on the Board of Zoning Appeals. And Mr. Tim Tips, who has served on the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Gateway Commission, has shown interest to want to be able to serve and has background in all of the issues that the BZA would be dealing with. So, we would be moving Mr. Tim Tips from the Gateway Commission to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And with Mr. Tips' vacancy on the Gateway Commission, Mr. Philip Seagraves, who is head of the Real Estate Department at Middle Tennessee State, has wanted to get involved with the city, and this is a good way for him to get involved on the Gateway Commission.
You need three motions or one?
So, we have done the shuffle.
You need three motions or one motion?
I think one would be fine.
Maybe we accept the recommendations of the mayor.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Ms. Wright, do we have any statements?
No, sir, not tonight.
Okay. Other business from the staff of the city council.
Mayor, we have a request that the council approve the purchase of police professional liability insurance. Bids were opened on March 9th. They had four bidders. Lowest bidder was Universal International and represents a substantial savings, and so, we would ask for approval. Mr. Rucker, senior managers here, in case there's any questions you would have.
Any question?
Yeah.
Sure. Ms. Wright.
Yeah, sorry, I wasn't sure where we were going with that, but the police liability sheet we got here, I was the one of the four people who sort of leaned away from going the direction that the committee, the committee majority decided to go. Essentially, my thoughts were this, just for what it's worth, I'll keep this kind of simple. We're, you know, to stay at the same coverage that we have been under, we're going from a $207,000 premium to a $165,000 premium. That would keep us at a $2 million, $3 million coverage levels. In order to get that down from 160 down to 140, we basically have to take on what I felt like was sort of a guinea pig role with the Tennessee Municipal Fund that I just didn't really think was worth the $25,000. And our policy, we have a policy to use insurance companies to provide our insurance that have ratings by standardized rating firms like Standard and Poor's and AM Best. And we don't have any of that, so we're really just relying on, whether it be staff to look at their financials or someone else to look at their financials and really determine whether or not they're actually able to cover us. Now, they have a $2 million and an uncapped limit on the backside. You know, my real issue with that is we don't really need the uncapped, first of all. I don't think. But in the event that we did need an uncapped policy, that would be a situation where we would have really outstanding, you know, significant liabilities. And that is the instance in which typically, financial companies struggle. Or, you know, if they're not held up to regulations that the insurance industry holds them up to. They may be, you know, they may be fine. I'm not just totally whacked out about it, but for $25,000, it just didn't seem logical for me to be the first city around, or one of the first cities around, to try this, as I understood it at least. So, that's why I kind of went the other direction on it, in a nutshell. Was that all accurate?
All was accurate, yes.
Yes, yeah.
Mr. Rucker, would you explain to us the advantages to having an uncapped policy?
Well, the advantage of having the uncapped is that if we have at least two claims brought against us for substantial amounts, and these kinds of claims against police seem to be the ones that are made in multi-millions of dollars, the uncapped amount will allow us to be able to handle whatever the claims might be. And I don't want to leave that sounding like it could be anything and we could handle anything. That would not be true. But within reason, the advantage would be that we would not be capped in an aggregate of $3 million, or if you chose the lesser amount, an aggregate of $2 million. of 2 million. There would be simply no limit to the aggregate. Now, the aggregate is the concept of the maximum that the insurance company will be liable for is a total of, no matter how many claims there are, just 3 million, and it stops at that. And the city then, of course, would become individually liable for what's beyond that. The same sort of situation that you would have when you have your automobile or homeowner's insurance policies. It's unusual to have an uncapped amount. The pool has chosen to do so, and that was a role that simply played into the thinking of other members of the Risk Management Committee.
Yeah, it certainly seems weird for me to say that it's a lower premium and we have a better coverage, and that I'm not really for that. That seems a little nonsensical, but just the idea that we really, I didn't feel comfortable with the idea that we didn't have a standard to go by with the municipal pool as we do with the insurance companies.
You guys want to defer it to the next meeting so you can look over it, think on it?
We really need to go ahead and make a decision tonight because the policy itself needs to be in place by March 31st.
If it were to be a negative vote on this, would, what would the situation be? Would we revert back to what our current contract was, or?
We'd take the 165 bid instead of the 140 bid.
You actually have an option of, well, all of them that you see on the second page of the report are bids that are available with varying coverages, aggregate and per occurrence, the coverage is the same for all of them. The aggregate occurrence is what varies. The amounts, of course, vary, and there's a variance on, if you'll notice the two towards the bottom, there's a difference in the self-insured retention, which is similar in concept to a deductible. And that's why those are in a set aside or set down a little bit because they're not the $25,000 self-insured retention of the others. It's really not so much a matter of a negative vote as it would be a selection among the options, and I can provide you additional information about any of these that you might be interested in.
So what I'm looking through here, you know, I'm going by a phone discussion and not seeing this. I just want to make sure the, we've got a 2 million, 3 million, a second one down, and then a 2 million, 3 million with a 50,000 SIR, right?
That's correct. And then down at the very bottom, you have a, actually, that would be a 2 million occurrence, 2 million aggregate, or those of you that are used to thinking in terms of your automobile insurance policy, it would be 2 million slash 2 million.
Yeah, at the very bottom, it says 2 million, 3 million. Is that supposed to be 2 million, 2 million?
No, that's supposed to be exactly what it is, 2 million, 3 million.
So we could, what is our SIR in our current policy right now?
$25,000.
Okay, so that would be the second line item that goes across, starts with no bid, and if we go across the lowest bid, it's the 164, 938, correct?
If I follow you correctly, yes, that's right.
Is the pool bid on the grid?
Yeah, but it's not, it's not in our.
Yes. Now, the pool bid, well, we're looking at the second row there, and the pool bid is, you're correct, would be unlimited aggregate.
The second category, 134, that would be correct.
You could do that, yes.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not in the grid, so inside, inside the grid, the 164 would be the next one up that matches what we currently have.
That's correct. If you chose the pool bid, it wouldn't make any difference what the, whether the 2 million annual aggregate applies or the 3 million annual aggregate applies.
Right.
Because there is no limit on the annual aggregate.
Yes, that's right.
Pool bid in that second category, it would be 144, no difference.
No, I get that. What I'm saying is that the lowest one that's two and three, that's what we asked for, that's 164, 938.
That is correct.
Yeah, with the 25 million S, or 25,000 SIR.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's where we currently are right now.
With the 25,000 SIR, that's correct.
So the low bid is pool, either one of them.
Yeah, you know, I understand what I'm asking, but that's all right, so.
Right. Then the next one, what you're asking is the next one would be the, would be Willis Tower.
Right.
Right.
So the next one from the pool bid is the 164, 938. So that's where the $25,000 comes in, the difference between the 100, well, so it's actually 20,000, right? It's a $20,000 difference.
Right, 20,000.
So it's $20,000 difference that we save by not going with an insurance company. Anyway, so let me ask you this, I didn't actually ask this. What kind of history is there? We had an indication in our conversation that there was really no history with the pool. Is there a history? Have they, have they paid any claims for these types of things in the past?
Well, the details of the pool's history is not part of the report or part of the information that was gathered. They have a history of having met all of their obligations uniformly for the years that they've been in existence, whatever those obligations might be, whatever was rendered against it, whether they have made insurance coverage, or not insurance coverage, but made pool coverage for other cities in their police professional liability insurance. It's my understanding that they have not had that kind of coverage for other cities before. I could be wrong on this, but it's my understanding that they have not, and that this is their first interest in trying to cover police professional liability insurance. They have had background, of course, in workers' comp, general liability, automobile liability, that sort of thing.
I'll speed the process up here a little bit. You guys do whatever you feel like's right in your gut, but I'm gonna move that we approve the 164, 938 from Willis Towers Watson that basically lines up with what we've been doing is through an insurance company. I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
All right, any discussion?
What was, we have a committee that made a recommendation to us. I kind of feel like, I'd like to hear more of what their thinking was to get to the recommendation that they made as opposed to just, you know, jumping over their recommendation to vote for it. I understand what you're saying.
So there's four people on the committee.
Okay.
I'm one of them.
Right.
Three of them decided to go with the, basically, what's the low bid, and I didn't talk to them, but I think it's probably of just, it's the lowest bid and the highest, the highest coverage, you know? So that's why I say it sounds a little weird, but I just didn't feel it was worth $20,000 to risk it.
The lowest bid and the highest coverage?
Not have any experience with the company to know that it's, they can provide.
Well, the pool is, we've used the pool for, you know, to fund, you know, governmental business for many, many years, and it's not something that has been unreliable and, you know, something that's not like someone standing on the corner that's just offering you a better price for a lower, a better project.
Insurance companies, they have to have reserves.
Right.
Everything they do, and I just, we don't have standards like that, that I knew of, at least, that we were able to determine. That's, that's why I went this way, so I'm, I'm good with it.
I understand.
Let me provide you a little additional information along those lines. You should know that one of the things that was reviewed by staff and was provided, information was generally provided to the Risk Management Committee, was that the assets of the pool, their financial statement is reviewed by their auditor and approved and certified by the, by audit, shows that they have assets of about $90 million. In addition to that, they also have reinsurance purchased above whatever limits they had for whatever arrangements they have with the individual cities that they work with. The reinsurance runs about $250 million, so it would be a combination of those is, would be their assets. When you're looking at an insurance company of the level that the other three are, you're looking in the neighborhood of a minimum, I believe, of 500 million and probably more like a billion and up. So you have much greater assets. Concomitantly, you also have much greater liabilities in that there are a lot more insureds with those insurance companies. So it's a, Mr. LaLance is quite right in saying that there's a difference in looking at the amount of assets that each one of them brings to the table when they make their bid.
One of the basic premises of insurance is having a big pool in that insurance, in that area, you know? So you want to have different types of insurances, but one of the basic premises, the whole reason that Obamacare, the Affordable Care Act, wants to have everybody insured is because they need everybody in the pool, so that when one person gets sick, the other people cover it, right?
Well, I don't like bringing that into the.
90 mil, no, I'm just.
I understand what your analogy is, though, but, but, but the point that I would make with this is that the pool is, it's, its design is to help municipalities reduce costs. I mean, and to fund projects, and I don't, I mean, I understand your point about just $25,000, but it's $25,000. And, and it, its intent is to create this option for communities to provide this service, this insurance for the, for the communities at a lower, more reasonable rate. I would tend to agree with the committee, so, I mean, I guess we just vote, but my conversation is that this, we've tasked them to come with a recommendation. I think the lower bid is more reasonable, and just because the fact that this, this company, I don't think it, I don't think it is a risk at us because we have a track record of many, many years of working with the pool, so that's my comment.
I agree with Bill somewhat on the pool concern, but my question is, is there a limit on the number of municipalities that the, they could approach, and at what point does that pool amount that they have get watered down where you wouldn't have that with an insurance company because you would have more diversity?
So let's say they sold to five different municipalities at an uncapped level. At the uncapped level is where we're supposedly getting the benefit, and so let's say they have $5 million each of claims. That's 30% of their total asset base is gone.
Well, if I could add, one of the important things with insurance, and it goes back a little bit, I think, to Mr. Smotherman's comment, is that the, the lines of insurance is what is important, so really, there's no diversity because you're insuring only a particular type of risk. And so regardless of who your customers are, it's the risk that's important here. The Tennessee Municipal Pool is a regulated entity. It's, it reports to a couple of the different governmental entities. It doesn't have a best rating, but it, my understanding is it hasn't applied for best rating because it doesn't feel like it needs a best rating. It doesn't market itself to anyone other than municipalities, so it has a unique customer base, which is one of the purposes of the best rating, is to use as a marketing tool in addition to a financial measure of competence. And in looking at the pool in Tennessee, it is a very sophisticated management, or managed organization, and they do offer certain lines of coverage. They have, over the years, offered lines of coverage, from my understanding, and then they have exited that line of coverage, so they don't jump in carefully and they're very carefully managed. And as Mr. Rucker mentioned, the important thing is that they do cover off their risk, so they do reinsure, they get stop-loss policies and excess carrier policies to manage the risks, so if they were to take on additional risks, then what happens is, in the underwriting aspect of it, you, you buy more, you buy more coverage, you buy more stop-loss coverage or reinsurance.
I'm definitely okay with the, the pool. I really, I'm okay with their financial strength as they, for what they do. I frankly just would prefer that this was five years down the road and they guinea pigged somebody else, and we could look at their history and look at their experience and say, hey, look, we got five years to show that they're solid, they're growing conservatively, and we'll, you know, can we be a part of that and save some money? Sure. What it really boils down to is I just don't want to be the first one out because there's nothing for us really to look at to say it's absolute that it's okay to do this, that we have, you know, the name of the, I don't know, it's a, it's a Risk Management Committee.
That's risk.
I'm trying to think towards managing risk, not just from a professional liability standpoint here, so that's it.
I hear your point.
I'm good to call a vote, you guys.
I hear your point.
Yeah, yeah, let's vote.
All right. So we have a motion to accept to, for the.
Willis Towers.
Yeah, for the Wilson, Willis Towers, 164, 938, correct?
Yeah. Ms. Wright, you have a motion, a second? Please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
No.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
No.
Vice Mayor Young.
No.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
That's a no, right?
That is.
All right. All right, so let's go back into discussion.
Move it.
I move we approve the recommendation of the Risk Management Committee.
Have a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Or, excuse me, Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Wrong meeting.
Mr. LaLance.
No.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, we'll move into, any other business for the staff of the city council?
Yes, Mayor and Council, we have one more item. It's, I'm sure all of you are well aware from having a agreement by Mr. Cartway, the Fountains Gateway is under construction and is rapidly approaching a, a overall building certificate of occupancy for the first building, which is the four-story building that we see now. The Fountains has a prospective tenant for the second building, which will be one of the front buildings in front of the building that's now under construction. That tenant is concerned about the city's clawback rights, as have been negotiated with Fountains, and has asked us to clarify those, that they're, would not impact this tenant. But back up just a little bit, at the time the city sold this property that is to Fountains, it was a rather speculative venture. It was something we hadn't done, this kind of a transaction before, and there was some concern that if the project didn't get off the ground, if financing didn't come through, if there weren't construction activity, that the city would want to get the land back and be able to move forward with a project. And so we negotiated into the contract with Fountains several provisions that allow us to require them to convey it back to us. And there are four that are of interest tonight. The first one required him to, required them to obtain a building permit by December 31, 2015. Well, that's well passed, they've got the permit, and as we know, it's, it's getting close to being done. The second condition was that they begin construction by July 1, 2016, two months from now, and it's almost done. The third was that they have a C of O for that building by December 31, 2016, and we feel that it's so close to that, that staff recommends that we just consider that as, as having been satisfied, and that by the document that I'm asking you to approve, we. been satisfied, and that by the document that I'm asking you to approve, we simply, basically declare that items one, two, and three are satisfied. The fourth one deals with vertical construction of the two front buildings. They've been referred to as restaurant retail space. It would be separate, smaller buildings in front of the current building. And the way we wrote it at the time, we were contemplating that both of those buildings would begin construction at the same time. One of the other things we recognized when we did this was that we were looking at it a huge plan, and we knew that things would change and that events would come up, that there was, would have to be tweaks to the plan as we went along. And we're now in a position where, I believe, actually, a permit for earthwork and foundation construction has been issued for the second building. A building permit for the vertical construction is awaiting approval of a design of the building by the DRC, which we anticipate coming up here within the next few weeks. So what we would like to do for the fourth condition is to make, make it clear that construction of one building will satisfy the condition, that it does not have to have both buildings started to satisfy the condition. I, I think all staff, I think the whole city is thrilled with the prospect of, of the Fountains and what it's going to mean to our gateway. There was a public announcement that I'm sure most of you saw, and hopefully most of the city saw, about a, a new restaurant venture that has leased space out there. We anticipate some other announcements of, of other tenants coming in the near future. So with that, I would ask that you approve this release and satisf, partial release and satisfaction, and authorize its execution by the mayor.
There's no questions. I move for approval.
Motion, a second, Mr. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Any other business?
I've got some other business. I'd like to ask Rob and Craig. I continue to get lots of comments, emails, calls, about the homelessness, panhandling issues around town. Could you guys put together some ideas for us to, to look at in the, in the near future?
We'd be glad to.
Thanks.
Excellent suggestion. My disguise is working.
Folks, I think also, if it's okay, gonna huddle, if, if you will email, since you can't do it directly to me, but what I was gonna, sunshine law, you know? You know, we've talked about the staff retreat, or excuse me, the city council retreat, and I think instead of going through a, a process of trying to figure out who is gonna moderate that and get someone from the outside, I think what would be good is maybe let's have a, a list of issues that each council member would want to discuss, and send those to Mr. Lines, and then we'll come up with a group, a, a list of, say, you know, ten or twelve items. What, what we could do is maybe populate what everyone's had, and what are the ones that are in common. We put those through, and then let's just get a date. And I, I think what would be good is, is we discuss between the council. We'll have staff there if they need to answer any questions, but it will give staff an idea of where everyone is leaning or, or thinking on each individual topics. And that way, I think the more we talk about trying to find someone, we just need to go ahead and, let's get together and talk about it. That's really what we're talking about doing. Any thoughts?
I agree a hundred percent, Mayor.
Sounds good.
I, I think we're, we're at the point now that we've got so many broad issues that we need to discuss, that we don't need a moderator to sit there and tell us what direction we need to go. We've got several topics that we need to discuss, not at the level that we'll be voting, but at the level of, that's going to be much more vague, of what direction we need to go as far as parks are concerned, as far as the budget's concerned, as far as the, the much broader topics, which I think we need to have discussion and, and come to some consensus on that, that we would feel, at least understand how each other person feels, so that when we go down the road, we'll have a better rapport as far as being able to communicate and, and understand what direction we're all heading.
Would everyone be okay? I was trying to think of a good location to have it, you know? Many, many years ago, we had, there was one that we had, and I was on the planning commission. There was one that was at Peacock Inn and Beach Grove, and then we had one that was at the Wilderness Station, and, you know, I don't think we need to spend money to go anywhere, but I think what may be a good location that maybe a lot of us have not necessarily had the opportunity, one of our biggest issues we're gonna be dealing with is gonna be water service and sewer service, and we've got the, the, a nice meeting room that's out at the water and sewer facility on Joe Blanton Drive, if we wanted to meet out there. It's a nice facility. It's a large room.
Actually, Mayor, there's a great meeting room at the water treatment plant.
Sorry.
That would be, you know, we've had staff training there. It's a, a nice environment, city-owned, and that might be a good opportunity for a comfortable place for us to, to meet at no cost.
I'll tell you, one of my thoughts on it, just for what it's worth, you know, is to try to have some after-meeting time, to be honest with you. You know, sit down at dinner around a roundtable and, you know, be, you know, a little more personal rather than this. I don't know if that really satisfies that. I'll, you know, I'll go with what everybody wants to do, but that was something I felt like would be a good, important addition to that, is, you know, just like I said, on a personal level, be able to have some time like that. I guess I had in my mind a dinner or something like that, which we could still do conceivably, but however you guys want to.
Well, my, my thought is, you may have three brand-new council, council members after August the fourth. So whatever you do as a council, they need to be included, whoever they are. So I understand where you're coming from, but I don't think you need to do anything until after the election, August the fourth, and get their input and get them educated about how the city really operates and, and where you want to go, because new people tend to have new ideas, and, and some of them make sense and some of them don't. And we learn, and I was the same way. And you learn as you go, and you understand how the city really operates about debt, you know, you got schools wanting to buy some property and all this stuff going on now. So I would suggest you do what you want. I'll be there if you want me to be there. But that, whatever you do, don't have any retreats until after, after the next election.
Ron, I want to say to you, with all the respect in the world, I want you there, and I want you there on purpose, because we, we should, I agree with you, we should have one after new, new folks come on.
Right.
Okay? But, I mean, look, to be able to draw from twenty years of experience, we need to get some of that before you leave.
Wow.
From a strategic vision standpoint, that's specifically one of the reasons I would like to do it before.
Well, I know how to sit in the back corner now.
I want you in a position to talk more.
I'll do whatever.
I think you're both right. I, I think that there, there may be a, a large change in the council, but here again, we, we've got a lot of business coming up in the next ninety, a hundred and twenty days. We've got a MED project, we, a school site project, we've got a park project. We've got a lot of things that we need to talk about, and since it's not gonna cost us anything but a lunch and maybe a supper, let's, let's go ahead and set one up, and then we'll have one after the election.
Did we discuss this last time? Are we, are we thinking May, so that we've got a preliminary budget in front of us, but before the real budget comes out? The real budget discussion, is that, is everybody...
The last time we brought this up, that was the, when I thought the key point was that we were gonna try to have something, that we could have some of these discussions before we actually got into the final budget.
All right.
Well, what, what we'll do, I'll go ahead and, if, if it's okay with everyone, try to work on getting a date. The only thing we may have trouble with, and I'm not, it may be where, if it was okay, we did a breakfast and a lunch, so we got to have, spent, maybe...
Eight hours, yes, seven hours.
Two coaches up here that seems like every, every night is booked with, with something, so it may be something, it may be tough to do. But we'll, we'll, let's get it together where we, and I think it'd be good to have some, plenty of breaks where we do get to have, have some good discussion.
Well, Mayor, I'm a public servant. I'm gonna do whatever you all ask me to do. Whatever the citizens, that's, that's me. So if you have twenty retreats or two, whatever you want to do, you know, I'll, I'll be there.
I go where they send me, and I do what they tell me to do.
Exactly.
U.S. Army.
All right, is that, everybody, everybody on board with that?
Well, that's marriage.
And I spoke with Madeline Scales the other day, talking about the, the topic of potentially having a meeting, and she said that she would do everything that she possibly could to make sure that she was there. So I, I think that would be advantageous if, if, the, the plus to having it local, I think it'll be easier on Madeline.
Madeline.
And plus, I think it would be, you know, an easier process all the way around for all of us if we keep it local.
That's enough marching orders for you.
Yeah. Any other, got two things that are, just two announcements. We have an official new city attorney here with us tonight, and welcome. He was sworn in, took his oath of office right before the council, council meeting, so congratulations.
Thank you.
And then tomorrow, excuse me, Saturday night, the Willie McGowan banquet, is that right?
Well, the wine and cheese is tomorrow at the Bradley Museum. It's a walk-through, just go through, see the museum. It's a new beginning, it's a new opportunity. I appreciate, and I, I was on the radio show the other night, other day. I appreciate the council, city manager, and all of you all for supporting Bradley Academy, more than you know. Y'all just don't know how much I appreciate you all's support. Couldn't have done it without you. Melissa and her staff and everybody, we're working through that. The banquet is Saturday night, seven o'clock, James Union Building. Mayor McFarland's gonna be there and do some presentations and whatever. It's a new beginnings, and, you know, I've always told the folks, hey, look at, do you want a monument or do you want a museum? If you want a museum, it's gotta be operational. So thank you, council members, for supporting the Bradley Museum. I want to personally thank you.
And if you've not been over there since the, really, the Parks and Recreation has, has been working, you know, we went over and did a video. It's really, it's really gonna be something that the city not only is already proud, proud about, it'd be something the city will continue to be proud about, and, and the history continuing to move forward.
Yeah. Nate Williams has done a fantastic job of jumping into and, and getting involved in moving the process forward on it as far as the, the changes and the different ways of operation and scheduling of meetings in the conference rooms and stuff, but it's, and like Ron says, it's, it's, it's one of the jewels of our community, and we need to do everything we can to continue to preserve it and make sure that it continues to shine.
Nate has been outstanding.
And not only is Nate doing that, he's been working on the Better Borough Project, and it's...
He is.
And it is always good when you've got, Nate pushes, he's pushing me to get stuff done, you know? And so that's a, it's, it's good to have that.
That's another example of how outstanding you all have, some city employees that are the best in the world. He's one of them. You got a whole bunch of them out there. After eighteen years of dealing with city stuff, well, really twenty-some-odd years, can't beat them, can't beat them.
I agree.
Thank you.
Even you, Mr. Lines.
Yeah, I hope we keep Mr. Lines another week.
Just wait till your review, pal. Old Dominion.
I'll still flip the welches every morning.
Welch's on a bit. All right, any, any other items? All right, seeing none. We'll stand adjourned.